Check two, check three, check four. Check two, check three, check four. All right, check one, check two, check three, check four. It's coming over the closed caption and everything here, so it's picking up. Check one, check two, check three.
Right, we'll be live at five thirty.
Thank you for watching! If you enjoyed this video, please consider subscribing to our channel.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting. I know that we're a bit, a bit late and I apologize. So I'll call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order for Tuesday, November 14. And I'd like to note for the record that all council members are here and present in the Nat U Hill Room, except for Councillor Munson, who is in the courthouse and will be here shortly. Let's have the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to note that if we get new chairs, they need to be spinny so that I can sit down and it's an important feature. All right. Does anyone wish to add or remove any items from our current agenda? I can, I can say that we know now, we know that we need to table item seven. We've been tabling that item. I think it's the prosecutor's office. Waiting for them to get paperwork on their grant and they still have not done that. So can we table with a voice vote? All in favor of tabling item seven until the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. There is one other item. Item 10. I, we received an email giving us some information that item 10, which has also been tabled from the last meeting. There was just a kind of clerical fund misnumbering that has impacted advertising. So we would not be able to appropriate funds as a result. So I would like to propose that we table item 10 as well and put that on our work session.
So moved.
All in favor? Oh, there was a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Guys have it. So are there any other items? Okay. Then let us proceed with item number four on the agenda, which is public comment for items that are not listed on the agenda. We usually have a time limit of three minutes per speaker. And we have one person in, in the room and I see a hand raised on Zoom. So we could please sign in if you're here and if anyone else on Zoom has items they'd like to comment in, go, go ahead and raise your hands as well. And we'll get to you. So we'll start here in the room. Welcome. I don't think so.
How about now? Great. Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl and the President of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We just wanted to comment on the county development ordinance process. And also give a shout out to the public that Friday, November 17th is an upcoming deadline on proposed land use rules for zoning in the unincorporated areas for Monroe County through module two. So we wanted to remind residents to visit MonroeCDO.com, check on their property, review module two of the draft CDO and comment on any proposed changes. And also help spread the word, the more that we've been trying to talk to people about this, we realize the public is not fully aware of the changes that are coming into play. And so if you know of any property owners out in the county or have clients, constituents or colleagues with land or businesses out there, they should know that how they or future buyers use their property might change. So they would want to check that out. The last CDO update was in 1997. So we, you know, think these are important changes. While there are many good updates in the CDO, we did want to note that we really appreciate the county's hard work in this process. Planning, Plan Commission, everybody's put a lot of work into it. We did see some unintended consequences that may be arising from the changes. Our concerns are that residential zone land is slated to decrease and land for employment growth remains limited, which are issues in our community when both affordable housing and employment and wages are key concerns of people across the community. The BDC is working on a detailed policy memo with suggestions to submit to planning on this. We really appreciate them during this process and just thank everybody for their engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Mr. Shelton on Zoom.
Good evening, Council Jim Shelton. I just wanted to update the public on Acasa's training plans for 2024. They have set the schedule. The first training will be February 6th through March 7th. And they continue to try different days and different times to see if it'll make training available to more people. So this will be the first training I know that'll be in the afternoon. It'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The training will cover the roles and responsibility of the Acasa, the family dynamics of abuse and neglect because there's quite often a pattern. Child protection law in Indiana, and then the interactions that they can expect to encounter in dealing with children and families, case managers from DCS and other professionals. And finally, report writing in the way that the court expects to see things provided to them. So the Acasa's job is to be another set of eyes and ears for the court to help Judge Harvey primarily know how the child's doing that has been removed from their parents because of abuse and neglect. How the parents are doing and addressing the problems that have caused this. And then how children, what they, they may need if they are old enough to need services. So please think about this. Application will be due January 24th. Thank you.
Thank you. As always, important messages. Are there any other members of the public who would like to make comments? Either here or on Zoom. And I see none. So let's move to item number five on our agenda and that is department updates. So are there any departments who wish to make an update at this time? All right, we have the
Good evening.
The Sheriff's Office here in the Nat U Hill Room. Welcome.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring up to speed on and clarification, the meeting we had today. I'm going to pass the floor to my Deputy Chief. He, he did the majority of the work for me and, and has all the specifics that we want to pass on to you. And particularly today, we actually reached out to certain people just to clarify certain things. And we felt that it's important that, that you as, as, as the actual council is aware of, of the conversation, what we actually learned today as well. So that being said, I'm going to pass the floor on to my Deputy Chief and then I'll, I'll stand by just in case I need to add any additional information that comes from me directly.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and allow us to speak to you. I've got a document I want to pass out to her body here. You have one for you too here, Sheriff. So we'll walk through this. As Sheriff said, we had a meeting today with several folks here about, it basically dealt around the transition team and the transition team director's position. But before we do that, I want to kind of walk you through where, how we got to this point and I'll, I'll do this pretty quickly. This started out and Counselor McKim and Counselor Iverson will, will be clear and I think Counselor Munson was there. We had a PAC meeting back on October 3rd regarding the transition team, transition team director. And basically what came out of that is that we all agreed out of that meeting that Molly and I were going to get together and start working out this director's position as a contract position to one, mainly to speed it up. And two, just because it, it just seemed to fit better. And, and we realized at that time that what we were there, really there was not a PAC issue. It was really a council issue. So we, we kind of punted that. Molly and I have been working together for quite some time here on this draft contract for the transition team director's position. Molly, were you able to email that to them?
I did email the contract to counsel, but it was probably close to four o'clock. So I'm not sure how many individuals were able to read it.
I, I almost brought a copy with me, but I, but I thought we were going to, anyway, it doesn't matter, but
I have a copy in front of me and I can print the exhibit A if you'd like real quick.
Yeah. So I mean, it might be helpful. Molly, but the, the, the contract itself is a contract between the sheriff and whoever this person is going to be. I think we all kind of discussed that, agreed to it. We discussed in that meeting. Gosh, we, we discussed salary and we discussed a lot of things, but that meeting there, you know, I timed it. We spent 42 minutes and 46 seconds talking about this. And we all kind of, it was very detailed, that discussion. And you go back to the PAC meeting, we spent 22 minutes there to PAC meeting. So I, we put some time into this. I thought we were headed in the right direction. In, in October 17th, we had a meeting at the sheriff's office regarding this issue too. So we've had three meetings about this. But what we talked about, and we, I think we all agreed upon here in, in with this body was the placement of that transition team director was, was an imminent thing. We, we needed to get it done. We needed to move forward. We specifically agreed that it was going to be a contract position. We would agree, and we agreed that it was going to be with the sheriff and overseen by the sheriff. We all agreed to that. The salary term, roommates points, all of those things that Molly's going to be getting for us. We're, we wanted that included in the contract. And I think you'll see that the scope of work is included in that contract. We discussed the office location. I think, I think Counselor Hawk brought that up, but the thing that was so important about that and the Counselor Hawk made this, this statement that the urgency of that position was because up to this point, the staff, and that, that means the sheriff, myself, the jail commander, the assistant jail commander have been assuming that role up to this point. And we have held from since the beginning of time, since we started talking about this back earlier this year, that that, that had to be a finite period of time that we still have an agency to run. We have a, we have a jail that needs lots of attention. We have a jail commander that gives it lots of attention. And every time we're in here talking about this, we're drawing from that and it's starting to, it's starting to be problematic. I'll just tell you that. So what, what I, I wanted to bring you up to this speed on this meeting here because out of the blue, things changed and I don't know how, but I want to, I want to discuss that. This meeting was a short notice meeting that we got together on teams. And in that meeting was Sheriff Marte, myself, jail commander, President Wills, Commissioner President Givens, Counselor Munson, Molly and Mark Martin from the National Institute of Corrections. And we, we discussed the transition team director more than, than anything. That brings me to this.
Counselor Crossley was there too.
Okay, I'm sorry. I put this together in like five minutes. So does everybody have this? Okay. If, if you look at this, Mark Martin, who's the expert that did the pony training, points to down to the pink box there under transition. And it talks about the transition team director, we're in the needs assessment phase. And he says, that's where we're at. So you know, a, a, as we go forward, we concede as we follow this timeline, the transition team director plays very heavily into that. In conflict with this, and this is where I'm confused, is Commissioner Givens has expressed her desire that, or, or feeling that this one isn't a full-time position at this point. And she's also expressed that it needs to be an individual coming from the sheriff's staff, which was never part of the plan. And I can, let me, let me address that just a wee bit here. This, this meeting was, I'll say contentious at best. The sheriff knows his staff. We've got a professional staff. We've got a lot of good folks working in there. But this person is going to be a project manager, managing a very large scale, complicated, complex process. That person is not in the jail right now. They're just not there. They, they know how to manage the jail. They know how to work the jail. They have many, many skills. But that person's just not there. Other than Kyle Givens and Matt Demings could probably assume this role. But as we've said, we've established and we, we, we've tried to make this omnipresent from the get-go. We cannot sacrifice the safety and security of that facility for this position. There, there's people out there that can do this, but it, it cannot come from the jail staff. It just can't. So we've always maintained our short-term ability to do this. And we're, we're, we're at the X marks the spot now. We have put tons and tons of times in this. I felt, I really thought tonight was going to be a discussion about ARPA funding for this position. And we may have been, we may have been hiring this position next week. That was my naive thought process before we had this meeting this morning. And it looks like there's been a whole new stall brought into this now. So right here, when we're in the, the, the home stretch here, we're met with this unexpected nuance. And where it came from, I don't know. Why it's there, I don't know. Because the experts are telling us now's the time. Here's what this person's going to do. But we've had a lot of discussion about a design team and a transition team. So I took delivery this afternoon and I called Scott Carnegie from DLZ because I wanted to get his thoughts on this. And here's what Scott told me. Let me back up. When we talked with Mark Martin from AIC. He agreed that this is a full-time position. He said, and right now, he said, but it, it may not be full-time at this very second. He goes, but it will throttle up very quickly, very, very quickly. So from our perspective, now's the time to start doing this because we're coming to lots of meetings about this. So here's what So here's what Scott Carnegie told me. I just made a few bullet points because I don't want to labor this point any. The transition team director is a full-time position. The transition director's position is needed now or in the very near future. The transition team is normally comprised of, in its entirety, of all jail staff. It's all jail staff. They are the experts. Cause there's talk about including other people on this design team and in this transition team. He said, normally it's always made up of sheriff's department staff. Then I asked about the scenario of the design team and the transition team being separate. Here's what he told me. Since the best case scenario for the transition team and the design team, if you're going to, if you're going to designate the difference to be made up by the same personnel, which we have held from the very second we started talking about this. He's, this is the quote he gave me, "To do otherwise inevitably leads to chaos." And if you think about it, if you've got a design team handing off to a transition team later on, this team doesn't, is trying to figure out how this team got to this place. Where, why would you want to, why would you want to do a handoff when all the parties, all the stakeholders can, can be involved from the ground level up? We just built the policy manual for the jail and what we did is we included a lot of that jail staff there. Because if you build something, you know where everything's at. You know what it is because you helped build it. It gets buy-in. So I, I don't know where this, this, this idea that we need to have two separate teams. We're trying to keep down on the cost. We need, we need to be very responsible with our taxpayers' dollars here. And we're going to talk to you later at some other time about phasing in that transition team in terms of numbers. Let's start off with what we absolutely need at that point, knowing that we may have to upscale it. We may not have to, but we're very cognizant of that. And then there was this, this thing about having specialty people in that team. If you get a giant team, you get too many cooks in the kitchen and we, we start walking around in circles here. So what he said about that is the transition team, yes, when, when we have, like when we need counsel on mental health or we need counsel on medical or whatever, we'll call in experts from the community or from the facility or wherever that expertise lies. And the council will get their input and guidance. But he goes, they, they've not been normally serving as members of that team. So I tell you that to tell you this. Up until this afternoon, we had already kind of looked out. We've got a couple of people that we know that can fulfill this position. They can fulfill it quickly. They can fulfill it expertly. If we're going to get, if we're going to get setback here, then just know this, then the whole thing's going to get setback. We can't continue to operate where we're just talking about things and talking about and wanting this and wanting that. And I would tell you that between myself, Kyle and the sheriff, there's almost a hundred years of experience in corrections and law enforcement. Mark Martin is the expert from pony training. He is, this is his chart. This is not mine. This is his chart. I asked him specifically about that pink box. He said, now's the time, Johnny, basically. And I've talked to DLZ who are experts in their field. So I, I'm asking this. I know we were going to talk about ARPA funding, but if ARPA funding is going to be an obstacle, I would ask the council, implore the council that we need to get this thing off the ground. And I hope we don't wind up chasing our tails here for another month or two. Because we, we are where we are in that process. And on that chart you see, that's where we're at. The other, the other document I handed you is what I gave you on the night that we sat here in this room for 42 minutes and 46 seconds going over this at nauseam. So that's my pitch. I, I am at a loss as to why we have stepped back. And we're not moving forward here. When I say we, I mean us as a, as a, as, as a, the meeting that we had today, it certainly appears that we've got some obstacles up ahead of us that we had no idea were there. Because the meeting we had in this room for 42 minutes, Commissioner Givens was sitting in this room when we had all of those discussions. We've not heard any objections about any of this until today. And I, you know, I'm not trying to be condescending. I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just trying to present the facts because they are relevant. They mean something here. And we're not, we're not going to, we're not going to sacrifice the safety and security of the jail. We just can't. And we've, we had a wonderful response from our meeting with, with the council. And I just, I just hope that we're still on that track.
The, the concern and, and urgency that you hear in the chief's voice is, is, is because we have so much going on right now. I, I, our time is consumed and, and it's not, you know, I, I, I'm the one that chose to be the sheriff and ran for it. And I'm blessed I'm here. So I, I understand that the responsibility falls on me. However, that being said, I, I still have to consider the safety of the staff and also the residents in that facility. I can't tell you the maintenance problem that we have to deal with. So when we take on an actual project as big as this is, we are going to do our research. We are going to do our homework and we're not going to come to you and waste your time. That's just not the way we are. But like the chief said, one of the things that we meet on a regular basis, and I wanted him to come and tell you because he has been spearheading all of this. And I do expect and hold my people to a very high standard. But we have to have reason and a logical reason why we're doing certain things and why we're not doing certain things. And, and we're at the point, I'm at the point now that I'm going to have to pull back somewhat because they are working tremendous hours. And this here put a lot of tremendous stress on them to try to get it to the point where we're at now. And then to be surprised this way is disheartening. It truly is. So I, I cannot add more specific fact than the chief just told you. But I, I assure you that when we talk to people is because we want to make sure we, we're telling you the right thing and being actually factual and truthful. And that's what we always continue to do. So with that being said, I, I thank you for your time. That's, if you don't have any questions of us, then we'll, we'll, we'll be ready to answer your question if you do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you, you being here and bringing this to us. I will, let me check with my colleagues to, because I, I feel like there might be questions for sure. Counselor Iverson.
So I, I think my overriding question at this point is today I received a contract from one of the council, or from the council attorney about what we're talking about today. And I'm hearing about a meeting that happened earlier today that I was not present to nor invited to. Is the contract that we have in front of us still valid as a proposed contract? Or are there substantive changes to the contract that was emailed to us at 4:30? From the sheriff's perspective, which that contract is between this person and the sheriff, that contract is absolutely valid. We, we went over it. We are in agreement with it. I just don't know if we use ARPA funding, if, if we're able to proceed with that contract. Because my understanding is the ARPA funding requires the approval of the council and commissioners. And based on what I heard today, it sounds like we've, we've got some issues with one, it being a part-time position at this time, or a full-time position at this time. And this, this kind of out of left field surprise that it needs to be someone from our agency, which we know is, is not in the best interest of this project. And I will tell you this, that Scott Carnegie authored a letter about the transition team. And one of the things he put in there is about the transition team director. And he said, ideally, it would be someone from the sheriff's office to lead this team. Well, as you know, what's the old saying? You don't go to war with the army you want. You go to war with the army that you have. Well, in, in this case, that person in our facility just doesn't exist. So we have to look outside. And I would hope as, as we have went through this process of the jail and established our foothold and established our, our credibility and established what our, what Sheriff Marte and his staff is all about, that we're not going to, we're not just going to go out willy-nilly and find someone that, you know, is a, is not up to this task. I mean, you never know until you actually, you know, jump off and pull the chute, but I, I will tell you this, I can't, I can't pull Kyle Gibbons out and making the transition team director. I can't do it. The sheriff can't do it. We can't pull Matt Demings because they are so invaluable. It takes their daily presence to make that place work.
Counselor McKim.
So I guess I'm, I'm just fundamentally confused then. I, I thought we had all agreed that this would be a contract position. And so if it's a contract position, of course it wouldn't be a staff person. That's, that's kind of
Right.
one or the other. So how did having this contract position be a staff position even come into the discussion?
That's why that we are equally, we are equally confused. Cause this meeting came to us, to our knowledge with the invitees, I, I think Thursday or Friday of last week. It happened today. And we had no idea what the content of their conversations meeting was going to be about, other than it was going to be about the transition team. That's all we knew. So as we went through this, this is what came out of it.
So to provide what little context I, I might be able to add. The meeting was called by the, the commissioner's office. And I believe that it was intended to share information that they had received from the pony instructor. What was his name?
Mark Martin.
Mark Martin. He was also then on the call as well.
Correct.
And you know, I think we're, we're getting a lot of recommendations from the experts. And they can be interpreted slightly differently. And I think there was some difference in interpretation of, yeah, it would be ideal if the person came from the jail staff. But that doesn't have to be how it is. And we, we do know that, that we've talked about a contract and our attorney's been working on a contract. I did, we didn't have the contract for this meeting. That, that's that, we didn't have that at all. It wasn't about the contract. It was really about the, the recommendations from Mr. Martin and trying to make sure that we were understanding them similarly. The end result of that meeting is that we realized we were not understanding them similarly. We had different interpretations of the advice and expertise we were being given. So that's, that, you know, that's sort of how that conversation came about and took place. And in the meantime, I've been able to look over quickly the contract that includes an exhibit A that lists all of the duties. And one thing that I've seen is that it does reference both the transition team and the design team. And at the risk of, of having yet another person's interpretation not align with folks, I'm seeing that as a Venn diagram of folks on a transition team that is managed through the sheriff's office. And then folks who have architectural and design expertise and perhaps some other needed insight that come together and work on, you know, things as needed. And, and maybe work more together during this actual design phase, which is the number five out of nine here. We're on number three. We need a transition team leader. That was made very clear. I do think there's some agreement around that. But the fact that the job description references these two teams leaves that interpretation open, I think, is, is that?
Yes. And, and when I talked to Scott and, and from our pony training, that, you know, I think part of the problem is we're getting hung up on the title.
Maybe.
The design team and the transition team can, and many times are the same thing. And when we talk about design, you've got to remember what you're talking about. You're talking about, I, I went over this, you're talking about proximity issues. You're talking about where do you put medical versus intake? Where do you put your mental health versus medical? So when you're talking about design, that is design. Who knows that? The jail staff knows it. That's those, so those people that are, that, that's why Scott Carnegie said the best case scenario is your design team and your transition team are the same people. And they're all from the sheriff's office. When you need expertise about, you know, obviously, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to be talking about what type of concrete strength we're pouring in the footers here. Is that a 5,000 mix or a 6,000 or, you know, the size of the rebar is at 5/8 or 3/4 or whatever? That's not what we're talking about here. That's, that's your, that's your architect in the specs. The design team is about where we put things in the jail so it's safe. It operates efficiently. It, you know, it requires staffing. We'll do a staffing level analysis of how we staff that. So I, I think that's what we're trying to get to here. I would hope we don't get hung up on design versus transition. They are recommended. I just had the conversation. They're recommended. They are the same thing and should be the same thing.
Okay. And I'm not sure that that's a huge issue for any particular person.
And today, you know, we touched on that a bit, if you recall, but it was all about this transition team director where we just, we went off the rails of everything that we expected to happen tonight.
So, yeah. So I don't think, and the reason I, I suggested coming to a department update as opposed to waiting for the ARPA agenda item is because it has never, that in my recollection occurred that council receives information same day or that afternoon and then is willing to appropriate. So I wanted to get you up here earlier in the agenda, knowing that it was very unlikely that ARPA appropriation would take place. Also, there's a process that we've been very, at various levels of successive employing, but I believe worked pretty well this last month where to appropriate for ARPA, we had a joint meeting of the commissioners and council to discuss projects that were proposed. And then it came to us in turn. And I think the last time it was, had a meeting on Monday. Council meeting Tuesday, we appropriated Wednesday morning commissioners meeting amended the plans so that the projects could go forward. And I think we can do that before the end of this month. We, you know, we have a holiday week, but the following week we can do an ARPA meeting on Monday. We can, we have a meeting scheduled. And we can table the appropriations so they're carried forward. So we can make appropriations Tuesday, the 28th at our next meeting. And then, and then have the commissioners have the opportunity to amend the plan and incorporate this position into the plan. I have not heard anything that makes me feel that this position isn't exactly what we need. And the timing is right. I mean, I, I heard the same thing you did this morning. And Mr. Martin said exactly that. It might not be full-time right this minute, but you have a lot of onboarding you're going to have to do with this guy. I know he's not your staff, but there's a lot that this person will need to learn about your operations in order to be effective.
For a week or two. We've got to
Yeah.
put him on transport.
Yeah. And we are trying to move this forward. And this is clearly a step in a process that some folks have been trained on. And I think we're all trying to get to know if that's amenable to you. And I am going to give my colleagues a chance to ask more questions of that. But if that's amenable to the folks, that's what I would propose as the next steps.
Can I just, we're only here for two reasons.
Yes.
To make sure that we haven't departed from the path, that this one is a full-time position, which was discussed today. And two, that it's not going to be a jail staff member, which was discussed today. We cannot abide. We cannot abide. That's really how the council works its magic to make it happen. And when, I'm completely unconcerned about that. I truly am. But given today's events, we were concerned that we're going to get in another three, four month stale war where we're sitting here going to meeting after meeting after meeting, trying to hold, you know, keep this thing held up.
Nobody wants that.
And that's where we're concerned.
And that's the whole point because at this point, you know, we cannot continue doing what we're doing. And in fact, it's not fair to whoever we decide to put in that position, to that individual. We're making decisions and making trips and going, that is not fair to that individual. He's, that person should be part of this right now. And we're going to have to bring them up to speed fairly quickly. So right now things are getting ready to move fast and we're not prepared. It, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm factoring with you right now. And, and, and the urgency that, that, that my staff had moved on this. And, and, and the urgency that, that, that this, my staff had moved on this, get to this point. And then here we are. Why cannot continue to keep doing this over and over again?
I, I respect that. And my concern is that X marks the spot was today. And if I get it, you know, move to the end of the month, can we move X to the end of the month and we're good?
It is what it is.
Yeah, we just, we were concerned that we've hit, we've hit a, a, a real, we've ran into a wall here. And we've got, we've got Mark Martin, an expert. We've got Scott Car- Carnegie, the expert. We've got a hundred years of law enforcement telling you that this is an immediate need. It's a full-time need and how we can do this. And I, I hope that counts for something and I, I think it does. But I just didn't want that to get, you know, overridden. Uh, be, because we've got this opinion that it's not full-time at this point, or it, it needs to come from our staff and, and we're just we're bum puzzled by it. And we wanted to make sure we came to you and informed you of, of where we stood on this.
Appreciate that. Yes.
I, I, I appreciate the information. I have to tell you, I've been a little confused tonight trying to figure out what's going on. And from an early age, whenever I saw folks at law enforcement and they, they looked a little agitated and, and it was pointed in my direction. I want to make sure I'm doing everything right. Um, the thing I just want to reference is, I recall from the last council session that we indicated our support for generally for that, the contract, I think even we chimed in with a little bit of advice, you know, you might think about this and all that. And and you're, you're, eh, eh, whatever you disregard that, that you don't need, you're wiser for it. And whatever you do need that you got, uh, bless you. Uh, but I think the sentiment coming from the council reflected that we were generally, I mean, I sometimes hit the room wrong, but I think the sentiment was that we were supportive of that effort. The only encouragement I'd have just for everybody involved in this process is I do like things in clean deliberative ways. So knowing that by the end of the month roughly, uh, as President Wilt said, that we will address this at least from our end. And we're not the commissioners. They are their own body. And I'm not a county commissioner. I do not speak for them. But from our end, I think that the goal is to address that. And that's what we can do from this end. And with ARPA dollars, the issue is there's, that's a two-headed snake. And sometimes one head's better than the other and it switches all the time, I'm sure. But I think that that clarity is good. Cause if i- in the meeting, if I, if I either have to go back, look at forty-five CATS meetings with a full-time job and two kids and a lot, uh, every other headache I have. I, I may not figure out what I need to figure out. But one thing I'm absolutely sure of, the public who's trying to figure out what we're talking about tonight is absolutely confused. And so I, I want to make sure when we do it at the end of the month, that is clear. So that folks know what's going on. That is the biggest comment I get where people are like, you guys and some of these details, I cannot figure out what's going on. And I, I want to make sure of that. So it sounds like we're on the right track. The sentiment of this council is not changed. And I get your passion for it and your expertise as well. And we honor that. Um, county government, the way it's built is strange. Anyone on the outside looking at it would say it is strange. Uh, it's not like the state and it's not like the city. It is very strange. Um, but still more functional than Congress. And so we'll keep that going. But it's, it is a, it's a process and I appreciate your passion for this. And I think we've got a good goal here and we can move towards it.
Now, in absent today's meeting, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
But we, we were, we, we had our say on the twenty-fourth and, you know, we, we knew this process was rolling down the tracks today, today through a real curve ball.
I doubt it'll be the last curve ball.
Probably not.
But let's handle this one and look forward and try to get to the next one. Counselor Crossley?
Yeah, um, um, being on that meeting, I thought I was gonna learn a lot more. It was, um, it was quite interesting. Um, so speaking of confusion is, uh, what Counselor Decker was talking about. I get a lot of conversations as well. And people are talking about what's transition team, who's this? Is this all, what is all of this going on? And so for the public that is watching or will watch on CATS or whomever later. Again, transition team is supposed to be composed of staff that is from the sheriff's office. This particular individual, the lead is almost like a project manager that is going to come in and help facilitate this. Here's where it gets sticky, at least is what I heard today. From my understanding, you all are saying that that is something that is under your umbrella and that you are wanting with this contract. Um, that you are wanting to basically put that person into play. And other people, other bodies, like this is your, this is your baby. Um, this is your team. This is your, and this is what you are wanting to be responsible for is, do I have that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, someone has to guide the team. Uh, otherwise we have chaos and, and that person is going to be reporting directly to me and the sheriff and the jail commander. So that we're all in sync of here's how we, how, here's how this build out goes. And here's, here's how we make it effective and efficient and and everything that we need in that facility when we open the door for the first time. So yes, you're absolutely correct.
Okay. I guess my final comment would be is we all have mentioned so many different times that we are not trying to kick the can down the road. Um, and that we are trying to do all that we can because we know that we might be light years away from a new facility, but the work obviously is something that is needed to do now. And the discrepancies and personalities, I should say, I, I really wish that there is a way that we can try to work together because this is something that's just kind of really pushing everything down the corner. And I know like, and we are obviously in full support. And as your staff leader is on, you know, supporting you as well. And I'm not saying that this is for you, just you all as well. But I just think collectively, um, commissioners, sheriff's office, county council, we all are elected officials and, and we all have our, our own lanes and our own rights. Um, but all of our lanes intersect and we can't do one thing without you. We might not be able to do one thing without commissioners and everybody else might not be able to do things without us. So it is my hope that we can continue to support and do what we need. However, if we can just, you know, do what we need to do and get this moving and rolling. But thank you for clarifying um, the points. Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna go Counselor Hawk and then Iverson and then McKen.
Mm-hmm. What seems to me, what we're really discussing is where's this contract going to be paid from? I mean, cut down to the chase. The sheriff wants to have a contract to get this moving. And is it going to be paid for with ARPA dollars? Are we going to be paying for it out of local taxpayers' dollars? Now the ARPA dollars are still public dollars, but that is a financial decision. And and so we would need the commissioners to say, yes, we can pay for it out of carpet, ARPA dollars because we're not in control of that. Um, and if they say no, then what we are in control of is having to use local dollars to do this. But the contract is to be signed by you, not the commissioners. The contract person is to be hired, but the contract is to be under the sheriff. With the new legislation that's in place, remember it no longer takes commissioner's signature on this contract. So what the discussion here is simply, where's the money going to come from? And that is our job. Where's the money going to come from? So, is this, is this more difficult than that? I mean, it seems to me, am I making it too simple?
As it currently sits, you'll see the contract is the parties of the contract are the sheriff and the contractor. Signed by those two and approved by the commissioners. That's, that's, that's the way the contract is currently situated.
But change it. If the commissioners, if the commissioners don't want to do this and you want to do this. And if the commissioners simply are, are not on board with this. I mean, that little part doesn't have to be in there. Whatever. I guess I'm just trying to make it simple so that we can just waste, quit wasting everyone's time. Let's just say if we're gonna do it, just do it. If we're not, not. Sorry. Counselor Iverson?
You know, uh, Madam President, I, I just heard our sheriff's department talk about feeling like they're hitting a wall. They're up against it. And, uh, I want to say, I, I feel the same way. I'm, I'm really frustrated. I'm gonna try and keep my, my comments short here because I am really frustrated. Um, you know, we do have a contract that was emailed to us. There was collaboration on that contract. It looks like a good contract. And, uh, it sounds like we've got a plan to take care of this. And I'm going to agree with Councilmember Hawk. It's, it's, it's time to go on this. It's, it's, it's time to have a meeting. And I'm glad we've got a plan. So let's do it.
Counselor McKen.
I was literally just going to, uh, uh, express support both for the, the concept of the contract. Uh, with the position, with the person, with the full-time person to be selected by the sheriff's office. And then also with, uh, Counselor Wilts's timeline plan. I like the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, uh, ARPA process. And if, if it doesn't work, then we'll, we'll have to, you know, then we'll have to find another funding source, which I'm sure we're willing to do. Cause we think it's important too. And I think everybody's committed to making this work. But I think the, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-ninth plan is, is an efficient way to get this in the, get this considered for agreed upon for ARPA appropriated and then added to the ARPA plan.
Counselor Munson?
I also want to support, uh, President Wilts's, uh, proposed timeline for taking action on this. And it gives us time to review the contract, which I was in another meeting at four thirty and, uh, did not get to, uh, see the email until, uh, I came in here. So I think that gives us plenty of time to look it over and ask any questions that we might have.
No.
Okay. Um, and then we will be in touch with the commissioner's office to, um, talk further about scheduling that, uh, Monday, the twenty-seventh. And, um, and if the contract we have is the final one, then I think we're, we're set to, to look at it and go forth. Um, if there are any updates, Ms. Turner King, let us know. And, um, I thank you again for, for being here. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Got it done.
Yeah. All right. We are on department updates. Um, and we do have, um, Ms. Nestor Jellin on, uh, Zoom with an update.
Hello.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. I'll keep it short. Um, I just wanted to provide a quick update on the Monroe County Development Ordinance, the CDO. Um, the CDO includes an update to the zoning ordinance, the subdivision control and the zoning map. As Ms. Pearl from B E D C mentioned, it's, uh, the last entire update of this ordinance was in nineteen ninety-seven. So changes are very important for us to provide updates at this point. Um, there's been a few articles in, or a couple of articles in the Herald Times lately. So I just wanted to come on and kind of explain what is upcoming. So we most recently put together four CDO listening sessions for people to come and speak uh, to their elected officials, um, and appointed officials. And this was to discuss the draft zoning map and draft module two. We encourage people to visit monroeceo.com for updates as well as helpful links and ways to comment. In an attempt to keep the CDO moving forward, we've just asked the public who are unable to attend those listening sessions that occurred in August and September to submit their feedback for module two, which focuses on the draft zoning map and use table by November seventeenth. However, there are many more opportunities for the public to comment, to comment moving forward. Um, again, the date of November seventeenth is just to allow the plan commission and planning staff to start collecting and analyzing some of that public feedback. Receive to date and encompassing, uh, incorporating those changes, um, and start having those discussions. The final portion of the CDO module three will be development standards such as landscaping, signage, parking, et cetera. So I just want to reiterate again, the CDO is still in a draft form. There's still opportunity to incorporate changes. Give your feedback. Um, the final comments for the CDO can be taken up until the public hearings and adoption of the CDO. Prior to the public hearings by the plan commission, all Monroe County landowners will be notified via mail of the date, time and location of those hearings. The CDO zoning map and text will be fully adopted once it goes through the plan commission public hearings and then to the commissioners for full adoption. So we welcome people to contact our office at eight one two, three, four, nine, two, five, six, zero. Or planning office at co.munro.in.us for any questions. We've received a lot of good phone calls this week and believe we're able to, uh, help people, uh, in the public go over any changes. So happy to go over that with anyone and, um, let me know if you have any questions. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there any questions from counsel for, on that? Go ahead, Counselor Hawk.
Yes, um, when I go to the main page for the county, there should be a link there. Let's make it a lot easier for the public to find it. And, or am I looking in the wrong spot?
Are you talking about the?
Not being paced and I don't know how to find this. So whatever. Um, I mean, when I open this up, I'm seeing a press release for the canopy of lights. The local disaster, something of that, legal notice for public involvement. Maybe that's it. The October one?
Um, no, I can make sure that it's on the homepage. It might be under the pla- it's probably just under the planning page. So I can try and get on the homepage. That's a good idea.
Well, let's not, let's not make people work that hard. I mean, look at that page. Very important news. Few the important news. Well, that's pretty important news. Anybody know how to run a newspaper around here?
The canopy is a pretty good article too. I do have to say, but I.
I, I agree. And if you could work to get that put on the, the main page, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Questions or comments for Ms. Mr. Jellin? Thank you for the update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other departments wishing to provide updates this evening? Okay, I see none. So let us move to council liaison updates. Are there any council members who would like to make an update? Counselor McKen?
Thank you. As the, uh, liaison and council appointee to the solid waste management district, I just wanted to let everybody know that the district has been officially and legally renamed the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County. Uh, the board, staff and citizens advisory committee all agreed that the new name better reflected the mission of the district. And, uh, further the term solid waste creates confusion in the public about what the district actually does. So we think this is a step forward. And also because of the pending name changes, signage at the district sites haven't been replaced as soon as they otherwise should be. And so right now there's some pretty substandard signage and, and undoubtedly users of the rural sites have noticed that. But those users of Waste Reduction District facilities will be happy to know that now that the name change has been, uh, completed, the new signage will be on the way. Thank you.
Well, excellent. All right. Any other council liaison updates? Counselor Hawk?
Uh, yes, um, I wondered if you have all received the information from the airport. They're good news. Uh, about moving forward. They have, I don't have an open right now. I'm trying to get it to open, but it won't open. Um, the airport, um, they did have their, uh, well, can you, can you open it? I'm having trouble.
I just opened it. It's the FAA part one thirty-nine airport certification inspection. And they achieved a clean inspection. Is that the notice you were talking about?
Yeah, right. That's, and, and so much of the time, th- they're doing wonderful things there and we don't always know about it. Uh, I love the fact that they once in a while put pictures of those big airplanes coming in and going out and and then people really want to get involved. Uh, but, uh, congratulations, uh, to the, all the airport staff because that doesn't happen, uh, just, just by one person. It takes them all. Uh, so wanted to say congratulations to them. Indeed. And then also, um, and the liaison to the treasurer's office and they've been busy getting money so that we can spend it. And so those are, are, uh, things that's going on here in Monroe County. People care about, uh, what, how much their taxes are and how, uh, how they're going to manage to pay for what the services there are being. how they're going to manage to pay for what the services there are being provided. And they don't always recognize that the airport is a part of what they're paying for. Uh, but the airport brings in jobs and allows us to have the kind of a job creation that we have here in this county. So, thanks.
Uh, are there other council members who have liaison updates? Okay, it looks like Auditor Smith has some.
Yes, I wanted to comment on what Marty said. Um, I spoke with Amy at the airport today. And she's very excited that the next uh business ex or um uh Chamber of Commerce uh Business After Hours is going to be at the airport at the IU Hangar, and they're gonna highlight the history of the airport. So it's gonna be pretty fun.
Do you have a date for that?
Okay, we're sorry.
Well, we can look it up. We'll find out. Um, all right, I think that's all the liaison updates and our next item was tabled. So we are now at item eight with our Employee Services Department.
Counsel, I moved to approve the Employee Services Depart- pardon me, Employee Services Department's request for a category transfer in Fund One Thousand Zero Three Zero Nine. General Fund Employee Services of nineteen thousand six hundred thirty-six dollars from the Services category to the Personnel category.
Second.
Welcome.
Good evening, counsel. Um, this is a category transfer to move some funds to cover the personnel, FICA, uh perf and self-insurance lines for the position that we um created in our office earlier this year. This is a do as I say, not as I do situation where we, Kim and I help uh monitor these things for the other departments. And I completely forgot to do it for myself. So I apologize for the lateness of the uh request.
Well, it looks like it it works. Um, are there questions or comments? Counselor Hawk?
Okay, so regardless, you are ending up doing what it is we're asking, what we want all the departments to do. Instead of asking for additional appropriation, you're asking for a transfer of funds from one area to another. So you got that part right. Anyway, congratulations. I didn't, as you know, support this position at the time because I felt like it was we had new positions at a different time, no mind this one.
Sure.
However, I'm glad that you had the assistance and this part is exactly correct. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Although we can do a voice vote on transfers.
Although we can do a voice vote, I hear. So let's do a voice vote. All in favor of approving the Employee Service Department request for a category transfer, please say aye.
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 Close, say nay. And the ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at item nine from our Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for an additional appropriation in Fund One One Seven Zero Zero Three Zero Seven. Public Safety Lit Commissioners in the amount of sixty thousand dollars in the Services category.
Second.
Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. Um, I'm here seeking a request of uh an additional appropriation of sixty thousand dollars into the Sheriff's Fleet Maintenance Line. Uh, we believe that will help us get through the end of twenty twenty-three. Um, I'm happy to uh take any questions I'm sure you may have.
Okay, um, counsel, yes, Counsel Hawk?
I just wondered if anyone had looked at the other lines to see if we could move some money around rather than like, you know, the one categories. I just didn't have time to look at that.
In in Public Safety Lit?
Right, I'm just wondering in that area if there's any rate of your transfer rather than a rendition. But I'm sure some.
Has been, were you wait, have you looked to see if there was an ability to make a a transfer?
I would have to consult uh Angie about that, I think.
Yeah, okay.
The notice went out from the council office. Well, maybe it was the odd season. Uh, a notice went out from either the council office or the auditor's office requesting that all departments look to see if they can do a transfer amongst funds uh before they ask for an additional. And so I'm just asking if that happened.
I believe that that.
And I'm not looking at the budget now, so.
Right. I believe that would have been Ms. Purdy who had checked for that, and she is usually pretty good about about that. Um, so the answer is, I don't think we know if that was fully reviewed. But um are there other questions from council about this additional? Going once. All right, um is this amount of, it says uh in the text that the average, well, there is a typo. I'm just gonna ignore the typo. But the average monthly expense for um the fleet maintenance for the sheriff is fifteen to twenty thousand per month.
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm hearing.
That's a lot. Is that consistent over time? Like, has has that, was that the case last year?
Um, I'm gonna put this in a nutshell. I am pumping a lot of money into vehicles that I would like to surplus. And we recently received five new vehicles. Uh we purchased six, we received five. That's gonna allow me to rotate some vehi- vehicles out of the fleet that uh that are becoming costly, really. Um, I think I think the more uh new newer vehicles we can bring, it will help reduce the cost of the the vehicle maintenance. The uh hang on, bear with me here. Um, so yeah, that's it. I wa- I'm, I've had to spend some money on some substantial engine work and that type of thing on cars where I think uh normally you might say, you know what, I'm not gonna spend that kind of money on this vehicle. But uh for instance, this summer, um, we had uh most of the the spares, I believe all the spares thirteen were in use at one time. And that's, that's kind of a a bad situation, I think. And so they have to be available. And we have to keep them available. And you know, if one has a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it, it's gonna cost a fair amount of money to keep that vehicle maintained properly. So when we can rotate those out, it's a better situation.
Are you anticipating these costs then to stay about the same?
I anticipate them to decrease. I do.
Okay.
Because we were able to bring in some new vehicles. And I think that we're gonna be able to rotate some out. But I don't wanna rotate out too many because I don't wanna find myself in a situation like this summer where we're, you know, they're all in use and
Right.
That's, that's like I said, that's a bad situation.
For sure. Counsel Becker.
Hmm, you're essentially saying that we're, we might get us a little bit of a newer car float for for just a little bit on some of that maintenance.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
You you're essentially saying that for a while, we might get a a newer vehicle kind of float like we all get when we get a newer car, but but you've been paying a lot of cost, cause
Absolutely.
Things are running through and they're wearing down and
Yep.
Dad's old uh drive it till it rusts down doesn't exactly work well for fleet maintenance, right?
You got it.
I got it.
And so?
Yes, I just pulled up the um uh location report regarding this budget. Um, it has three um lines with regards to services. One is for animal control, sheriff's maintenance, and jail maintenance. Um the animal control line has two thousand dollars. The jail maintenance has six hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents. So they can't make a category transfer to or an in-house transfer with regards to um this sixty thousand. The remainder of this budget is all personnel.
All right.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate that. Are there other questions or comments?
I wanna add one thing.
Yeah.
I think there was a point in time where you could put in an order for several vehicles and and you receive those vehicles in a in a decent amount of time. And uh twenty twenty-three, uh those vehicles were supposed to arrive in April and they didn't get here and, you know, until later in the year. And that entire time, you're just, you're, you're pumping money into vehicles that you would rather just see go.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Counsel Iverson?
I'm gonna ask my routine, where are we at with greening the Sheriff's Fleet question?
Where are we at with the what?
Greening the Sheriff's Fleet question.
Greening the Sheriff's Fleet question. I am not any further on that than maybe the last time you asked me.
I asked it pretty uh, uh, not too long ago, so.
I think, I think um there's some other departments that are adding EVs and I kinda wanna have a look at those and see how it's going. There's actually one not too far from here that I would like to go visit soon and have a sit down with them and see how it's going.
Great, thank you.
Other comments or questions from council? All right, then could I please have a roll call?
Public comment.
Oh, there's public comment. Please make comments, public. And no comments from public. All right, now could I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Appreciate it, yep. Um, before we move on, I just wanted to note that in the chat, Mr. Shelton has let us know that the Business After Hours event at the airport is on December thirteenth, starting at five thirty. So now our viewership is made aware. Thank you. We are now are we all the way to eleven? My goodness.
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for a fund to fund transfer of cash of two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for Fund Twelve Thirty Eight Zero 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 Opioid Unrestricted Settlement Fund to Fund Nine One Six Four Zero Zero Six Eight Opioid Grant RFF Twenty Twenty Three Zero Zero Seven.
Second.
Well, hello and welcome.
Hello, um, I think you all know me. I'm Commissioner Penny Githens.
Hi, Kathy Hewitt, the Health Department. Good evening. Good to see you both.
So we'll start just with item A. Um, and this is just to transfer the funds that we have already are receiving from the state into uh our own fund so that we can be using this. And this is the transfer of opioid settlement money that we have gotten so that it's our match portion of for the monies that we've received in the amount of five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars as additional money.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counsel Iverson?
Uh, I just uh for the record, wanted to indicate that Mr. Nick Boils is in the back of the room as well.
I was gonna bring him up for item B, but it's fine.
Come on up.
It's my pleasure to introduce Nick Boils, who's the Executive Director of the Indiana Recovery Alliance. And um Nick has been, was instrumental in actually putting together the grant application as well for for all these things and has been working with us.
Thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure. I'm a lifelong Monroe County boy, so.
Oh, right. Well, it's good to have you.
Uh, first of all, uh, a while back, one of my, I have to apologize for something. A while back, one of my newly uh hired employees was at a one of these functions and had some kind of foul language and some attitude. And we dealt with that in-house and made sure that that was recommended. So I'm sorry if that offended anybody. That's not how we act. That's not how we are there. We run a ship that has nothing to do about anything but love and compassion. So if that happened, I'm sorry. It won't happen again.
Wow, thank you.
I put together a couple of things for you guys. If you wanna take a look. Because hastily done and the printer was spared, but you can get the gist.
All right.
I'll give you a brief kind of like idea of what we are. This is a snapshot. We are a robust program. Uh, but it'll kind of give you an idea to answer some of the questions you might have and see what it is we do. As soon as you all know that we have a a large problem in our nation and and in our county. And uh this uh thing that's become a little bit more popular now, harm reduction, I was not an easy convert to. Uh, I at first didn't understand it. I had no idea what giving people needles would help. Um, it took me about a year to see the proof and to see the people. And to see the people I thought would never get in to any sort of form of recovery, recover. You know, I now walk with so many of those people. And I've lost so many of those people. And I lost my best friend of thirty-five years who I never thought would have left. And uh it's very personal work for me. I'm also a survivor of hepatitis C and incarceration. So like, this is very, very, very personal work to me. I'm a lifelong Monroe County kid. Uh, I'm not going anywhere. I've been here my whole life and I'm not moving. Uh, this building will allow us to do more than just have a certain service program. We will open further services for people in recovery, many pathways of recovery. We will have a place where people can be safe. People can be respected and cared for. Um, not housing, although I wish I could do that. But uh we can push forward with with doing programs that will make serious changes. Not just, you know, changes that get five percent of the people, changes that pull in sixty-seven percent of the people. Uh, people are five times more likely to seek some sort of recovery just by walking in my door. You know, just by being able to have a conversation with me about their drug use or one of my staff, changes everything. They don't have to hide. They can simply have a discussion about something that's so taboo that they don't even know where to begin with their family. And some, just by me understanding and having been through it, or some of my staff that have been through it, they can open up in a way that's monumental, you know? We're also anonymous. Let's think about being in the, in the Indiana, if any of you are in any other programs like this, but it is everything. In the early dark days, when the twelve steps were everything we had, people used to say, are you a friend of Bill's? Because you could not say that you were an alcoholic. You couldn't. It would lose everything in your stature. That still holds true today. So we 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 are very careful, you know, to keep things anonymous. And it's one of the bulwarks of our places. You can come here, we don't know your name. We won't, we won't look at you in public. But we'll give you anything we can to help you get a, get a leg up and and get to a place where you can feel like you're human again. Where you can feel like someone loves you and cares for you and is willing to go a little extra mile for you, which is a very rare quality today. If you have any questions about any of that, please ask.
Thank you. Um, turn to my colleagues. Are there any questions or comments?
Uh, just thank you for coming and speaking. I know it's not always easy to come and speak about this topic in a public setting, so uh we're here for you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Um, thank you for doing the work that you do. Um, I've past few years learned more and more about harm reduction. I'm still learning and it it's clear that it is a valuable path forward for folks. And um and I I hope that not just on a local level, but across the state, we start to really appreciate that as an option.
We're working really hard on that.
Yeah, appreciate it. Um, we have a motion before us. Are there any questions or comments on the motion um for any of our folks here? Nope, all right. Then um I'm asking for a public comment. I'm not forgetting this time. I see no public comment, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counsel Crossley?
Yes.
Counsel Wiltz?
Yes.
Counsel Deckard?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Yes.
Counsel Hawk?
No.
Counsel McCam?
Yes.
Counsel Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed six one.
Thank you. We have item B?
Counsel, I move to approve the Board of Commissioners' request for new account lines two eight, two four one opioid restriction supplies four one one zero four vehicle purchase and four five one five one property acquisition in Fund Nine One Six Four zero zero six eight opioid grant RFF and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the Supplies category and six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the Capital category for a total appropriation. and six hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the capital category for a total appropriation of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
And did you want to address any of this specifically? I think we've heard about.
So, so as you all know, we have a mobile vehicle. Uh, and the mobile vehicle was handed down by Dan Big, who was in, uh, uh, just a pioneer in the naloxone efforts in the early years. And uh, it rested and rolled around and it's now just to get a brake job done, thirty-five hundred dollars. I love it. I don't, I think I'm probably gonna keep it for training vehicle maybe, but like, it cannot be on this. It, it needs to retire. You know, it was in nineteen ninety-five and I don't know if any of you driven a, a bread truck or a stepside van from the old days? Then you know what I mean? When the brakes go to the floor, it's time to put it up, you know? And uh, we recently took it into Ken's and I asked him, well, you know, what are we looking at? And he was like, I hope you really love this thing. And it's just time. We just, we need to reach people where they're at and this vehicle is not gonna allow that for much longer. And so we, we've searched everywhere. We found a place that we trust that other people told us is trustworthy. They uh, do everything and even deliver the vehicle and we get to design it to do things like we, right now, we work with the nurses at Public School of IU Public School of Health, we train them. And we'll be able to actually have an inside testing room. We'll be able to have a lift so that people who are, uh, disabled can actually be lifted in. Not like it is now where it's really hard to like meander somebody up onto the small space. And it'll change the face of what we can do in our, in our recovery efforts. We can reach places we couldn't reach. You know, we can train, I train all over the state. I've trained the entire Harm Reduction Street Outreach Team that we have here in the state. It'll allow me to take that to people and actually train new teams in new places that are harder to reach. So it's a game changer for us and for the state. I don't know if you guys know this, but Harm Reduction in Monroe County is like a, a, a beacon. We are literally who's trained most of the state in Harm Reduction. And uh, to have something like this as well as Larry, meaning we have both training as well as something that's viable to go places. And it gives us a place to help the next generation of people wanting to do peer recovery work, wanting to work into this. Have, see something they can do and look at and go, I can be that, I can get there. You know, if I can get there, they can get there, you know?
Just as a point of clarification, right now, um, HIV and HCV testing on Larry is done in this little cubby way at the back with your arms in like that, there's just no room. So we're hoping for a bigger testing space where um, it'll have privacy and confidentiality, more privacy and confidentiality to be able to offer that testing. Right now, Nick is providing education, like an educational clinical for the nurses at IU, but it's educational only. The nurses aren't doing testing, so. Thank you.
Um, one of the things that Harm Reduction does also is it reduces the incidence of Hep C and, um, HIV, and we're starting to see a spike back up in that. Is that correct? That we have seen a little bit of that, at least around the state. I know that they said that, that they have. I also, you all know this, every week I review the claims. And part of that is what we're paying for autopsies. This, this week, it's thirty-nine hundred dollars. That's for three autopsies. And that part of that is because we are seeing overdose deaths here. And so one of the things that Harm Reduction also, I think, is successful at is that we are saving people's lives with this. So, um, I urge you to create these lines and thank you for your help.
Thank you. Are there comments from Counselor Iverson? The last thing that I would like to say is, you know, this is also HIV/HTV prevention. This is a big HIV/HTV prevention effort. Um, that is one of the big reasons as well as Harm Reduction that the state's involved with that and encouraged us to do those programs.
We in two thousand nineteen, we went, no, in two thousand nineteen, Indiana was number one in the entire nation with new hepatitis C, uh, infections. The only reason we're not seeing that right now is because COVID came and testing halted. We had much more things to deal with. As these next year to rise, I guarantee you'll be right there again. And what we're seeing right now preliminarily is out the door. You know, it's one of the state, this is one of the best efforts we have to get people who normally won't get there. You normally won't walk into a hospital or anywhere else.
Yeah. Wow. Counselor Iverson?
Uh, clearly, uh, I am in support of these very important projects and as, uh, we just read out some pretty uh, high dollar amounts for vehicle purpose and property acquisition, uh, just wanted to ask a simple questions of, you know, do we have, uh, eyes on a vehicle? Uh, do we have one already selected out? I know vehicle acquisition is difficult these days. The same with property acquisition. What's the story on the property?
So we have found a property at, uh, seventeen ten Western Street. It needs a little renovation. But for where it is, it's on a beeline, it's close to the, uh, close to the, uh, shelter. And I guess what I just now know, which I think is the best thing, is that the Beacon Building will be right next to it. So we will literally be there. Those three people in an arc of services, which is very rare in, in our world, that's very rare. Uh, the building is big and is gonna need help. But for what we found, I don't know if you guys have ever shot for a building here with that money. I thought that was a lot of money when I asked for it. I thought that was a crazy amount of money. Everything in town was one million dollars. There was nothing I could find. This showed up and would just works perfect. It's two separate buildings. But it's a building that has two separate places. So that way we can incubate what's called an RCO and start a recovery, uh, um, a recovery community organization. We can start other efforts through there. We can have, you know, a thousand million things. We, we want to get an I-R-X program in here. You know what I mean? That's one of the things we're really trying to work for. All of these things can be facilitated through the size of this building, which is wonderful. And I just found out today the roof's not bad, which is the big, was my big scare, because I'm a roofer, so it was a big scare. Um, the vehicle, we found one, we looked for used vehicles. They were like, it was really kind of a scary thing because what we found was, most of them were in the like upper, first of all, I didn't understand how much they were either. When I asked the state how much for a vehicle, they said, oh, hundred thousand. So that's what we thought, you know, a hundred fifty, a used vehicle with four thousand miles, that's two years old, is a hundred and eighty thousand. We found one at Tesco that, uh, we're hoping to get additional funds for, that's two hundred and forty-five thousand new with a huge warranty. And it's completely, uh, we can design it out what. So like, we can put a washing, hand washing station, which is huge for wound care. It's like, we work with He- uh, Health Med and they're on deck. They can do some, some wound care stuff there, you know? And that's, so we have eyes on both of them, ready to go right now.
Great. And, and you're right. I mean, that's really close to Wheeler. That's really close to where, but it's also very close to some frozen custard places.
Coops. Coops.
I mean, yeah. Great, thank you.
Are there other comments or questions? From counsel? Okay, alright. Is there any public comment? I see no public comment, so let's go ahead and have a roll call vote on the appropriation.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you.
Come see it when it unveils. We'll have an opening and as much as you can, come stop by. Even if it's just random and you want to stop by, we love it. Please feel free to see it. Once we get in the building, get everything set up and put out like a, what we're gonna do with it for our opening, but come and see us. See what we do. It's, it's a game changer, actually seeing it and seeing what changes we make in our community. Uh, some things get put out of proportion and people don't understand. Seeing it is believing it. And that's what happened to me. And I suggest anybody who doesn't feel that way should see it for their own eyes and see if that, you know, just to check, you know, well, let me see if these guys are really talking or somebody else is talking. I suggest you come and see us, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are at item number twelve.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a new account line, one six eight zero zero transitional temp trading position in Fund one one seven six zero 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 motor vehicle highway.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Ridge.
Good evening. Uh, we have an employee that's been with us for twenty-six years. Um, she is retiring December fifteenth. Um, so we want to, we have began the transition of replacing, um, that position. So we just needed to create this line so we can transfer existing funds into it to get us through that two-week period of cross-training.
Right, that's how we do it and makes sense. Any questions or comments?
Yes, hey. Am I confused? I thought we had said more than one time that every department should have a transition line? Did we say that?
You, you talked about it, but it was never officially, uh, uh, moved on.
Mm-hmm, because, you know, the transition line can only be used for transition. When I'm not saying putting appropriations in there, I'm saying have the line for every department. So if they want to do a transition and they've got the money to move down to it, they're not sitting here for two hours to do something that should just be automatic. I'm, it's just me.
Yeah, I, well, in general, I think both of Ms. Ridge's items could have been, could probably be handled by staff and, uh, and or remotely. We hate to make you waste your time. You must really love.
I wanted to come see you guys. It's, you know.
You must really love her.
Got, get at work at seven AM, so it's great to stay here till seven PM, so. It's fine.
Busy. She has beautiful grandbabies. She needs to be.
Oh, it's perfectly fine. It's part of the job.
We also like the roundabout.
Pardon?
We also like the roundabout.
The roundabout's pretty cool.
Oh, the landscaping? Thank you. I think it's really, if you haven't been down there at night, um, you should see the lights at night. It is very.
Nice. Alright.
Did a good job on that.
The one, so, Smith, and it's just wonderful. I never have to worry about it. I know I'm not gonna sit down lines just trying to get to the other side of the road. I love it.
Cold question.
Yes, um. Is there any public comments on this item? I don't even know if there should be. Um, let's go ahead and have a, do we need a roll call vote on this? Yeah. I guess so. We'll have a roll call vote.
Yeah, this one requires no appropriation, so you can do a voice vote.
Let's have a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, passes unanimously. Um, can we put, uh, a discussion and agenda item on adding these lines to all the departments? Just, uh, some time in the near future.
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll have to do it, uh, we'd have to amend the salary.
Yes.
And the half thing, so.
Yeah. Alright, uh, we are ready for B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Highway Department's request for a category transfer in Fund one one seven six zero 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 motor vehicle highway at fifty thousand dollars from the services category to the supplies category.
Second.
Any juicy stories for us on this one?
Not really. Um, so, and I really don't mind being here, so I think it's good. I think it's transparent. People know what we're doing, so I don't mind having to come to these meetings. Um, in twenty twenty-three, uh, we purchased a piece of equipment for road widening. When we've paved a road, sometimes you get a higher pavement than the edge of the shoulder. So this is to add stone and then it gets packed down to kind of make a stone shoulder. Um, so we've been doing that on a lot of our paved roads, so we've used quite a bit more stone this year. Um, so we're just asking to, um, transfer from the gas and oil, which is a three, into the stone and gravel, which is a category two.
Mm-hmm. Are there questions or comments from counsel? Nope, alright, um, could we have a roll call vote, please?
It's a transfer, you can do a voice.
First of all, public comment. I see none. Alright, all in favor of the category transfer, please say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. It passes, the ayes have it, it's unanimous. Thank you for your patience.
Madam President, I apologize. I'm doing solo parenting tonight and I have to go do a kid transport, so. I apologize. I hate to leave you all.
Important work.
Fun.
Important work. Have a good night.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund eight one two six nine six two four Futures Clinic in the amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred and five dollars in the personnel category, seven thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars in the supplies category and twelve thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars in the services category for a total appropriation of eighty thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second, uh, was that eighty thousand seven hundred and sixty-five?
Yes. That's what I got in my notes.
Alright, second.
Alright. Um, hi, Ms. Kelly is on Zoom with us. Welcome.
Uh, welcome. Good evening. So this is just to approve a new, um, grant contract funding. So the Futures Clinic does alternate between TANF grant funding and Title X grant funding. In addition, we rely on, um, program income and insurance reimbursements. Um, but this is just for the new grant contract, um, that began in October.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from counsel? Okay, seeing none, any public comment? And could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley? Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Excuse me. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, item B?
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund eight one five zero nine six two three TANF futures of one thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-two cents from the supplies category to the personnel category.
Second.
Okay, do we need any information on this one?
Uh, this is just to balance the account, um, before we transition to Title X.
Okay. Um, are there any comments or questions from counsel? Any public comments? Could we have the roll call vote, please?
I didn't hear you.
That's alright.
Okay, so this, you're doing a category transfer?
Yes.
You can do a voice vote.
Alright, all in favor of the category transfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it unanimously. We are now at item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for additional appropriations in Fund eight one five zero nine six two three TANF futures in the amount of four hundred and three dollars and thirty-four cents in the personnel category and two hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-two cents in the services category for a total appropriation of six hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
Okay, we're appropriating the TANF grant.
Uh, yes, and this is just from our insurance reimbursement claims.
Oh, okay. Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Could we have the roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
And next item is C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for a category transfer in Fund eight one one two nine six two three STD strengthening prevention of nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents from the supplies category to the services category.
Second.
Okay.
Uh, and this is just generally housekeeping to just moving some money around to, um, finish paying out the IU health contract that we have and to provide additional funding for mileage.
Alright, are there questions or comments from counsel? Okay, any public comment on this one? And it is a category transfer, so we can do a voice vote. All in favor of the transfer, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it unanimously. We, that's it for that one. Great, thank you.
Alright, great, thanks.
Uh, we're now at item fourteen.
Counsel, I move to approve the appropriations in Fund eight nine five zero 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 American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of ninety-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents in the personnel category and a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in the services category.
Second.
Okay, um, Ms. Gregory, would you like to talk to us a little bit?
Sure, um, this is just one of those housekeeping items. Um, the retention bonus project has been completed, so the final, um, disbursements went out and, um, we don't anticipate any, any further. Um, and then, um, the Sodren House renovation project has been at a standstill for some time and it, um, seems it's not. has been at a standstill for some time and it um, seems it's not going to move forward. So we're just requesting deappropriation so that um, those funds can be utilized elsewhere.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from counsel? See none. Is there any public comment on this item? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yeah.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Nick brings us to item B and um, that is our additional appropriations that we've been carrying forward for ARPA. I do not know of any specific requests for this evening. Are there any that's, we need to make note? Okay. Um, then I would entertain a motion to uh, carry this one forward, so table it until our next work session on November twenty eighth.
So moved. Second.
Fantastic. Um, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And ayes have it unanimously. Thank you. We're at fifteen.
Counsel, I move to approve the county council summary minutes of September twelve, twenty twenty three regular session and September twenty six, twenty twenty three work session as presented.
Second.
Any questions, comments, corrections, notations? Okay, seeing none there, um, we can have a voice vote, so all in favor of minutes approval, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. And motion passes unanimously. That brings us to counsel comments. Anybody have anything left to say to us this evening? Counselor Crossley?
Just because, I just wanna do it. Um, today is Counselor Deckard's birthday. Oh, yes. And so it is important for us to recognize him on his special day, so happy birthday.
Oh, no.
We all have to do all that.
We not do that.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Councilor Deckard. Happy birthday to you.
Well, since you've done that, thank you very much. It's a joy and privilege to celebrate my birthday with you all. And it, I, I wanted to say one thing. Um, we were talking earlier about the announcements on the webpage. Um, please keep in mind a beautiful moment in this community is gonna happen in about, it'll be a week from Friday. It'll be on November twenty fourth, it um, retail commonly known as Black Friday, et cetera. But the day after Thanksgiving, essentially. But the lighting of the canopy of lights will occur here with this, the courthouse being the main actor, actress in that great scene. And if you've never seen that, come see it. If it's been a while since you've seen it, come back and enjoy your community. It's a beautiful moment that rejuvenates me for every single year. And so uh, look forward to seeing all friends and neighbors at that.
Thank you. Uh, any other counsel comments? Counselor Hawke?
Yes, I noticed. I noticed there was uh, something, some email going back forth about a trip to Ohio to take another look at that same jail. I mean, the, the trips aren't even made. It, it's an expensive thing. I mean, it, it appeared to me, they were saying if anybody wants to go and spend the night, you know, it's like, well, I mean, and did, did any, I don't know, am I just looking at this wrong or what? I mean, I went online to look at their uh, jail facility and you could see the pictures of it and whatever. How much does it cost to keep going back and looking at the same facility? That is huge. This, this just doesn't even look like anything we would do. Uh, so I don't know where the money's coming from, where people are gonna go spend the night. Let them know who wants to go spend the night in a hotel there to go do this. I mean, I'm just, I'm floored that we spend money on things that are not, it's not productive.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm not, I'm not finding fault with any one person. I don't know where this idea came from, but I was pretty shocked when I saw it. Just FYI.
Yep. Noted. Uh, any other comments? Oh, Ms. Shell, you had something?
Yes, I just wanted to remind the uh, counsel that we will be sending out reappointment letters for citizen boards and commissions. And so if anybody has any questions, we sent an email out earlier with uh, those appointments. And if anybody has any questions, please let me know, cause we will be sending those out tomorrow. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thanks. And with that, uh, we are adjourned.